Good evening. Welcome to the Eden Prairie Candidate Forum. I'm Deb Brinkman, President of the League of Women Voters of St. Louis Park and your moderator for the Eden Prairie City Council Candidate Forum. I would like to welcome our candidates and our viewers on behalf of our host, the League of Women Voters, chapters of Minnetonka, Eden Prairie, and Hopkins. The League of Women Voters, a volunteer, nonpartisan political organization, encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government, works to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League does not support or oppose any political candidate or party. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters. It is our purpose in sponsoring meetings such as these to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss issues that are important to you. There's never enough time to cover all of the issues in a limited time and setting such as this. If your questions were not addressed, please feel free to contact the candidates directly. Most of tonight's questions have been submitted online in advance. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. Those that fall in the same general area will be consolidated. Questions become the property of the League of Women Voters of Eden Prairie, Minnetonka, and Hopkins. The election for Eden Prairie City Council will take place on Tuesday, November 3rd, with absentee voting, which has started on September 18. You will vote for two candidates. The two candidates with the most votes, with the most total votes, will be declared the winner for the two seats for this election. There is no party designation for this office. I will now introduce the candidates for the Eden Prairie City Council election. Ryan Miskey, PG Narayan, and Lisa Toomey. This 60-minute candidate forum will begin with a two-minute opening statement. Following that, the candidate will have one minute to respond to the questions which were submitted in advance by the voters. A timekeeper will hold up time cards when you have 1 minute and 15 seconds remaining for your opening statement, and then they'll hold up a stop sign. Please respect the stop sign and finish your sentence briefly. Each candidate will be called upon to answer every question. I'll alternate between who goes first with each question. Our forum will wrap up with one-minute closing statements from each candidate. We're following the COVID protocol, so candidates may remove their masks while speaking. Ryan Miskey is unavailable to attend this evening, so I'll begin opening remarks by reading a two-minute written statement that he submitted. Since there are only two candidates attending this forum this evening, we may finish up just a little bit early. So this is Ryan Miskey's statement. My name is Ryan Miskey, and I am delighted to be running for the Eden Prairie City Council. I'm sorry that I'm not able to attend in person tonight. I care for and assist my elderly parents, who unfortunately are in a high-risk category for contracting COVID-19. As a city council member, I will focus on three priorities. The first is keeping our neighborhoods, parks, schools, and businesses safe. The second is promoting the economic recovery of our business community after COVID-19. The third is managing the city budget and keeping our taxes under control while maintaining high-quality city services. By way of professional background, I am a partner in the corporate group at Fager, Drinker, Biddle, and Rith LLP, Minnesota's largest law firm, as well as an Eden Prairie business owner. As a local Eden Prairie business owner, I am currently in the process of remodeling 7500 Office Ridge Circle, a 20-plus-year-old office building near the intersection of 494 and Valley View Road. The renovated building is envisioned as a catalyst to attract new businesses and high-paying jobs to Eden Prairie and to nurture the next generation of entrepreneurs that will emerge from our community. I hold a BA from Carleton College in Northfield, Minnesota, and a JD and MBA from the University of Minnesota. While attending the University of Minnesota Law School, I served as the Editor-in-Chief of the Minnesota Law Review. I'm proud to have been named to Minneapolis-St. Paul's Business Journal's 40 Under 40 List, and I have been repeatedly recognized on the list of Minnesota Super Lawyers. Growing up, I was active in the Boy Scouts. I became an Eagle Scout and earned the Gold Congressional Award, the highest honor the U.S. Congress confers on youth for distinguished public service and personal achievement initiatives. Continuing my commitment to scouting, I serve as a member of the Board of Directors of the Northern Star Council, Boy Scouts of America, which serves communities across central Minnesota and western Wisconsin. You can learn more about our campaign at RyanWhiskey.com. And you can follow our campaign on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. I would be honored to earn your vote. Next, we'll proceed with opening statements. We're going to start alphabetical, so we'll start with PG Narayan.
Thank you. I'm going to take my mask off, since we are standing a little far away. My name is PG Narayan. You have seen my sign, PG4EP. My website is PG4EP.com. I'm running for Eden Prairie City Council election. I love my job as a current city council member. I have been in this country 48 years, been in EP close to 22 years. I am from India. My two boys grew up in EP. When I came here, I could not speak a word of English. I did not have any money. First job, working in a Chinese restaurant, washing dishes. The country helped me to get a master's degree in electrical engineering. This country gave me great job, like running an engineering department for a billion-dollar company. ADC Telecommunication EP gave me the biggest job of all. I was the Chief Technology Officer for ADC, a Fortune 500 company, and I was responsible for all the technology worldwide. This country gave me the opportunity to serve as a city council member, the board like public television, Minnesota Hectic Association. I was the president of India Association, Chair of Human Rights and Diversity Commission, Southwest Transit Commission, Chair of Community Foundation. You gave me so many leadership positions in nonprofit, small, and large companies. EP taught me the EP manifesto. This country gave me the opportunity to handle 300 million-plus in budget. My budget was around 115 million in state of Minnesota, more than 4,000 government services that we provide. This country gave me the opportunity to run government agency twice the size of EP. I want to thank you, the opportunity to serve the city council member again. I love my job. I want to make EP the best place to live again. I'm an engineer, I'm a technologist, business executive, I'm a problem solver, a person listen more act, experienced running large government agency, experienced running small, large businesses, experienced running nonprofit organization. I want EP a better place to live for all the residents, all the residents. I hope you vote for me on number 3rd or before. Thank you.
Thank you, PG. And now we'll go to Lisa Toomey.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. I really appreciate you volunteering your time. My name is Lisa Toomey, and I'm hoping to get your vote for Eden Prairie City Council on November 3rd. Before I talk about myself and my campaign, I would like to express my concern for the well-being of people in these difficult and sometimes frustrating times. It is important, it reminds us how important it is to look out for each other. I'm originally from Connecticut, the youngest of eight children. I met my husband, Chris Wilson, in San Diego, where he was stationed as a Navy pilot, and I was living and working in finance after graduating from college. Shortly after we were married, my husband accepted a job with a manufacturing company based in Edina, and they moved us to Australia for three years. We returned to the States in 2001 and bought a home in Eden Prairie. I have served this community for close to 20 years through my involvement with nonprofit and civic groups in the city. For a long time, I was the Executive Director for Meals on Wheels. I have served on several boards in Eden Prairie, including the Community Education Advisory Council, the Eden Prairie Lions Foundation, and the Prop Shop. I have been a longtime member and past president of the Eden Prairie Lioness Club and a member of the Optimist Club. Currently, I am serving on the Planning Commission for the city. I am the President of the Eden Prairie Crime Prevention and Criminal Apprehension Fund, and I am also the treasurer for the Prop Shop. For the last 20 years, through my volunteer work, I've strived to help make the lives of the citizens of Eden Prairie better. I am running because I care about our city and would like to make more of a difference by becoming involved in the decision-making process. I am in touch with our community needs and concerns and will bring fresh ideas and positive solutions to the city council. I believe that I have the knowledge, skills, and experience to be an effective member of the council. Eden Prairie has been a great place to live for many years, and I would like to help keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And we'll begin with our questions. Again, the responses to the questions should be one minute each, and we'll start first with Lisa. What do you think is the most important challenge facing Eden Prairie, and how do you propose to address it?
Do I think it's the most important challenge? So, light rail is coming to our city. That's not a challenge in and of itself, but I've heard several comments that people believe that there could be some issues with safety involved in that. And I believe that the police are on top of that, and they're working with other cities. They have assembled an implementation and integration team with Hopkins, Minnetonka, St. Louis Park, and the Metro Transit Police to talk about training, equipment, and what the police department can do, and also how they can anticipate and work together and leverage their resources. That would be one of the things. Eden Prairie is a great place to live. We don't have any budgetary concerns right now, but that's the one thing I've heard mentioned the most when I speak to people. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. PG Narayan.
So you're asking three questions, right?
What do you think is the most important challenge facing Eden Prairie, and how do you propose to address it?
Thank you. So I think next 12 months, we still struggle, we'll be struggling through COVID-19, and I think that's not going to go away. So that will be one of the biggest challenges. I think we have done great job as a city council member, how we navigated that problem by emphasizing wearing masks, emphasizing the social distancing, and communicating to the residents, and that's an important one. And Lisa said, light rail, that's a big concern for the residents, but sometimes everybody is not aware of all the preparation work that's done behind the scene, that, for example, Met Council is going to have 40 new police officers that are assigned to this area. We have in city that the city manager and others having weekly meeting regard to this. And the last aspect is, I think, I think it's biggest problem that we need to solve is affordable housing and sustainability. It's very hard to stop it, too. Couple of more things, and Eden Prairie is really working hard on that.
Thank you very much, PG. And we will start with you for this next question. Working as a team is important for a successful city council. Which current members of the city council have you worked with on other committees and projects?
Can you repeat the question again?
Working as a team is important for a successful city council. Which current members of the city council have you worked with on other committees and projects?
Thank you. This is very important. Working with not only the city council, also I think is working with the staff is very important. I'm so glad Lisa's sitting here. I can already see that we will be working very closely, and it's really going to be necessary to our team. I have worked very closely with Mayor Ron Case last five years in the foundation board. I have worked with Kathy Nelson in the Foundation for Granting Committee. I am with Mark Freiber and Brad Aho in AM Rotary, and also Rick Getcho. So I worked with all of them last 10 years, 15 years, and I have very good knowledge of working with them, and I think you're absolutely right, working relationship with all the staff and the council member, very important aspect.
Thank you, PG. Lisa.
So I have, I'm a member of the Eden Prairie Lioness Club, and we do joint events with the Lions Club, and both Brad Aho and Ron Case are Lions, so I've worked with them at events. Other than that, I have been meeting with the city council members, and I know all of them through my work with the Crime Prevention Fund. So, I would just say that I haven't really worked with them on any big, huge events, but other than the Lions events with Brad and Ron, and they've been really great to work with. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And Lisa, we'll start with you for this next question. Some cities have received a lot of attention for defunding their police forces. What is your position on defunding the police and why?
I don't believe that the police in Eden Prairie should be defunded. Larger cities may face this dilemma, but Eden Prairie does not. This is an exceptional place to live and work, and there are many reasons for this, and one is safety. We have one of the best-trained police departments in the state regarding mental health crisis, de-escalation, sensitivity, and community outreach. Currently, each police officer in Eden Prairie is also an EMT. They are exceptionally professional and very kind-hearted people. I would support, perhaps, adding a position in the Housing and Community Services Department of a part-time social worker. That could actually help, when the police have interactions with people, help follow-up and take some of the work off of their plate, so they can do more policing, and that actually may result in less recidivism. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. PG.
Yeah, like Lisa said, I don't also believe that we need to change what we have been doing. We have an awesome police department. I've been working with the city last 15 years, last two years, I've been very closely working with the city staff, the chief. One of the things a lot of people don't understand is the task of our city police. They're like, they do a lot of calls related to mental health, EMT, like Lisa was talking about, opioid-related calls, and they also spend a lot of time in community relationship, such as they're involved in the People Fest Dunk Tank and Coffee with the Police and City Government Academy Night Out. It's really a lot of effort going in to build the community together, and I think that's most important. So don't think, don't compare our police department to other cities. We have a great team and great training, and we don't need to change anything we're doing, and if we're funding-wise, we are doing very well.
Thank you, PG. All right, PG, we'll start with you on this next question. Again, we'll stay on the topic of police. With Eden Prairie's expanded light rail and housing developments, what is the plan for adding to police budgets?
So this is a similar question you had earlier, regard to the initiatives. So LRT is approved. We got fund close to 900 million from the federal government. It's going to happen. And our city manager, the police chief, and the fire chief has been meeting on a weekly basis to figure it out, all the different detail aspects, when the LRT come here, how that going to be. So we are not going to be surprised. We want LRT to come to Eden Prairie, and we're preparing every day. Additionally, that I mentioned, that 40 Met Council police officers will be assigned to the LRT line here. So we are in good shape, and as always, you know, we have to trust our staff. Our staff, like city managers and police chief and other people, they have been doing great job under our city council guidance, and I believe they continue to do that in the future as well.
Thank you, PG. Lisa Toomey.
So I mentioned this before in the first question, but I do speak with the chief regularly through my work with the Eden Prairie Crime Prevention Fund, and we've talked about this at length. The police department has assembled an implementation-integration team with Hopkins, Minnetonka, St. Louis Park, and the Metro Transit Police to talk about training, equipment, and what the police department can anticipate. I think it would be a good idea to have a police presence at the stops for at least the first six months to a year. There's maybe have a satellite office at the stop at the Southwest Station. They have a satellite office in the Eden Prairie Mall. It doesn't have to be permanent. It could be, it could just be there for six months to a year, so that people know that there's a definite police presence in Eden Prairie. And actually, and I know they're going to do this, have cameras everywhere. And also, we need to be open-minded and wait for the facts to see if the calls for service go up for the police department a significant amount before we talk about adding substantial employees to the new officers to the police. I know they're planning on hiring two new officers, but that's to keep their staffing numbers up. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lisa, we'll start with you with this next question. One last question on policing. Do you plan to maintain or increase the ratio between the number of police officers to residents?
I think the ratio that they have now is good. I'm not sure the exact number. PG might know, I'm not sure, but as the community grows, and we are going to grow, it's projected that we will be at 80,000 residents by 2040 or 2050. And right now, we're at about 63,000, so we will obviously have to hire more police officers then, and as we grow, we'll have to keep adding to the police department, which is fine by me. They're a great department. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. PG.
Yeah, I don't think we should look at the ratio. It's the wrong way to look at it. Look at what's happening in the city, like light rail coming in, and see if that need to add more police officers to protect our residents, we need to add the police officers. Some case that coronavirus may start some issues in the city, then we may have to add more police department. But generally, we should not look at that ratio. I talked to detail with the chief and the city manager. Our current budget is fine, and we are just on a yearly basis. We don't need to add more police officers. The ratio, whatever it is, is the right amount. And I think, again, that we have a great police officers, they're well-trained, we have a chief is outstanding and under great management of our city staff.
Thank you, PG. We'll start with you with this next question. Do you support restricting flavored tobacco products in Eden Prairie and a cap on tobacco licenses?
Well, we, a couple of years ago, that in the city council decided to move the tobacco to 21-years-old, and it was a debate, and I was in favor of that. I don't think we should have tobacco sales before that. And same thing in this case. This is an addictive material that we really need to restrict and protect our young children without knowing vulnerable people that getting into this addiction and causing, they don't know what they're doing. And because of that, I believe some level of control, restriction, moderation, and maintaining it, then we do what a right thing to protect all the residents in Eden Prairie.
Thank you, PG. Lisa.
Could you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Yep. Do you support restricting flavored tobacco products in Eden Prairie and a cap on tobacco licenses?
So I do agree with restricting the flavor, the sale of flavored tobacco. It's a known fact that if the younger you start, the easier it is to become addicted to nicotine, and if they leave, they keep the age at 21 and restrict the flavored, because the flavored is clearly marketed to children. So I also am not sure how many licenses we have in the city, and how, but I think we're fine in terms of places that sell that type of thing. So yeah, I mean, we could cap it. There's a lot of places that still sell it.
Thank you, Lisa. And Lisa, we'll start with you with this next question. So we'll switch topics to another important one, diversity. How will you help create more diversity and inclusion in the city of Eden Prairie?
So, sorry, Eden Prairie, diversity is something that Eden Prairie has been working on, I think, for a while, and it's a difficult topic to tackle. One of the things you can do is to try and educate people about other cultures. The Human Rights and Diversity Commission is working on a race equity plan. They have a few programs. One of them is Coffee with Cops, where they meet with the police chief, and he talks to them about things. There's People Fest, which I know PG is part of, the Hometown Celebration. The city can get the information out to different communities within the city about these events and encourage them to attend. We can promote social and racial equalities with, to make sure that the inspections department is in the apartments and making sure that things are up to code and safe for people. People can attend the City Government Academy. They can attend the Citizens Academy for the police department, and just get involved with the community and attend the events like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. PG.
Diversity is extremely important. The reason being is in Eden Prairie, we have around 25% non-white, around 15% foreign-born. And when I was in HRDC, Human Rights and Diversity Commission, I was such a vice chair and chair, I thought of the idea called People Fest. That name came from me and tried to do that. That didn't work out. Went to foundation, Eden Prairie Community Foundation, tried to raise there, and it took a year or so, and then two years ago, three years ago almost, we had the first People Fest event. The idea there is truly that celebrate the culture, learn the culture, so you appreciate the culture, so diversity. And we do, the city does a lot of things, like I was saying, Dunk the Tank, and Coffee with the Police, City Government Academy, Night Out, and many things that to promote the diversity and education, bring people together, so we have a cohesive society, and we have a, people can, everybody can live and work and enjoy life here.
Thank you, PG. One more question on diversity. PG, we'll start with you. How will you support the current Human Rights and Diversity Commission as they begin to make recommendations to make Eden Prairie racially equitable from top to bottom?
Oh, this is a great question, because I'm one of the ones sat that chair and approved that effort. So I think this is the time in our society, we need to look at all the aspects of our city, the policies, the training, the hiring practices, and we want a body that, we means the city council, want a body to look at that, and that's the reason we assign the Human Rights and Diversity Commission to look at. And they are the ideal organization to look at that, and we have the right amount of city staff in there, and the community leaders in there, and student commissioners in there, and I believe they're going to do great work and will come up with new ideas to the council, and I will be fully supportive of that, their recommendations.
Thank you, PG. Thank you, PG. Lisa.
So I agree with PG. The work that the Human Rights and Diversity Commission does is very important to the city. We need to make sure that they're, I would support probably all of their recommendations, but having, not having seen them or heard them. It would be, it's important to make sure that they're all, they're fair to everybody and make sure that the policies that they put forward or recommend are good policies. I'm sure they would be great policies. It's a good thing, because when you have a diverse community, you have a healthy community. And Eden Prairie is working towards becoming more diverse, and it's a really good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And Lisa, we'll start with you with this next question. We'll switch topics to the environment.
Uh oh.
Given the current climate changes, can you explain your stance on environmental sustainability and your climate goals?
So this is a very pressing issue, and it's probably one of the biggest ones that we're going to have to deal with. And I just saw today that there's a clock in Times Square that says it's like seven years left, counting down, until there's no way that we can reverse the damage that we've done to the climate. The city council has been very dedicated to sustainability for many years. Eden Prairie has won multiple awards. I would support the city's continued commitment to sustainability, the implementation of the Energy Action Plan. There's a new organic waste disposal going in in the city solar plan and the electrification of the fleet. All things, all, these are all things that would save the city money and help save our environment. In January 2022, Eden Prairie will have a policy regarding organic waste. And we will also have a new waste drop off area. So it's very proactive. The council's been very proactive in helping with sustainability and climate change. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. PG.
The climate change regard to, we approve two key initiative. One is a sustainability plan for Eden Prairie. Another one, a climate action plan. These are done last few months ago. And very important for Eden Prairie to continue and follow that basic policies that we set aside. By 2050, our goal is to be carbon neutral in Eden Prairie. And that take a lot of work. At least we have the guts to set some goal and drive towards that. And for example, we need help from the power companies and all aspect. We have to really encourage people to buy more electric vehicles. And we had to, well, the builders to make sure they have charging stations. And so overall, I think it's, climate change is an issue. I believe in science. I think we need to resolve this. We have to work on it. It's a, it's a, something that we already working on. And I'm proud of that, part of that working process.
Thank you, PG. All right, PG, we'll start with you for this next question, and we'll switch topics to guns. Our community has military grade weapons for sale at our local shopping mall. These weapons are AR-type rifles designed for US Army personal. Can you please go on record and state what your stance is on guns designed for combat warfare available for purchase by civilians?
So I have a lot of my friends own guns. So I believe in that having somebody need to have a gun. I don't have one, but somebody want to have one, they can. But I think it's more important to have proper background checks so that people can own a gun. Now, in terms of military grade weapons being used or needed in a city like ours, I discourage that practice. I know it's the First Amendment, Second Amendment right for somebody to own any type of guns. But if we can, again, there is rules that we cannot, city council cannot do. Some of these regard to these rules has to be state on federal level. But we can suggest, influence, talk to our House members and senators to influence to change some of the law. But the city level, I'm not sure that we have the right to make those changes.
Thank you, PG. Lisa.
So I believe we have to uphold the Constitution. However, I also believe that there are too many acts of violence committed with guns. We need better screening to ensure that guns stay out of the wrong hands. And I think that military assault types of guns are unnecessary for the average citizen. I think they're fine for hunting or recreation or self-defense or, but, but I also believe that those stores that sell, should not be able to sell semi or fully automatic weapons. There's really no need unless you're a soldier or a police officer. And then those are provided for you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. So Lisa, we'll start with you with this next question. What would you, what will you do as a city council member to keep property taxes from increasing?
Well, I think making sure that the budget is done in a responsible way. That right now, our budget is about $53 million proposed for 2021. And it's a difference of 1.4 million from this year from 2020. That's a change of 2.8%. The debt levy remains the same. This is a very responsible city. Our taxes are low. We are the fourth lowest tax city in Hennepin County. You get a lot of service for the taxes that you pay. We have a triple A. We, I will, I would do everything I could to help make sure that we maintain a triple A rating. But a lot of that work is done by the city staff. We have a great finance department. Our city manager is unbelievably brilliant. He's a great guy. And I think that I would oppose any significant tax increases, but I can't see any of those coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. PG.
Yeah, like Lisa said, you can already see that we work together, just right here. And like she said, we have an awesome city staff. We have a couple of CPAs. We have triple A bond rating. We are the fourth lowest tax rate. We don't, we manage our budget really well. Like I mentioned earlier, I have experience running up to $300 million budget and able to slice and dice that. And I don't need to use many of those that experienced here because they already done a fantastic job. And we can see the year over year, our increase is very small compared to the other people. For example, in the COVID-19, there are many cities that suffering major shortfalls in terms of their income. We are okay. We're a couple of percent below that what our, because we able to adjust, we able to manage, we able to improvise to how to do our $53 million budget, how we do that right. So I don't think, the other side is that very important. We have awesome services. The snow removal, the police, the, all the services that we provide is great. I'm not willing to sacrifice those services to decrease the taxes. It is really go together, hand in hand.
Thank you, PG. And PG, we'll start with you for this next question on business. What are some ideas you have for attracting small businesses in the Eden Prairie community?
So first, I want to say, I'm an entrepreneur. I'm a business executive. I've ran billion dollar companies in a senior level position. I'm currently a business owner of my own company. And so I understand the importance of the business and entrepreneurship. Light rail bring a lot of businesses. One good example is Elevate. You can look at the base, the first floor. There's so many small businesses started. And business to our community is very important. Mayor, working with Chamber of Commerce, that we are creating, how do we create more startups in Eden Prairie? And all the council member are really excited about that initiative. So I think it's, that's business coming to Eden Prairie very important. We work very closely. We meet the big businesses and small ones. We encourage the developers to develop and encourage them to bring businesses and employment to Eden Prairie.
Thank you, PG. Lisa.
Well, I think it's important to, to encourage small businesses to move to Eden Prairie, because when, when businesses thrive, the community thrives. More people will come to Eden Prairie to live and work. And we can encourage the businesses themselves to become involved in the community. A way to maybe, to, an idea to maybe help them or encourage them to come, move out here would be to maybe give them some incentives, maybe a tax break for the first year, property tax break, or, or, or look at, look at providing low interest loans to maybe minority owned businesses or women owned businesses. I know that there's substantial new redevelopment going on in the Golden Triangle along the light rail. So that should bring in some more people. And I'm really excited about that. I hope, I know that we will get some new businesses in here. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. And Lisa, we'll start with you for this next question. On housing. Affordable housing is becoming a bigger issue. What are your, is your stance on making homes and housing projects more affordable?
So you're right. Affordable housing has been an issue in Eden Prairie for quite some time. I think it's vital that we have more affordable housing in Eden Prairie. Many people that have grown up here cannot afford to live here right now. The kids go away to college and they want to come back, and they cannot afford to live here. This is an issue that definitely needs to be addressed. We also need to have space for generation, all generations of people who live here, regardless of their socioeconomic status. There are different ways the city can approach this. They have commissioned a housing task force to look at the issue. And they can, they haven't, I don't believe they've given their report yet to city council, but they're shortly going to give one. They could redevelop existing areas. The area where Castle Ridge Senior Housing was located is an excellent example of redevelopment. It's now another senior housing building and apartment building and new retail shops. The apartments will offer some affordable housing. They can also work with developers and give them incentives to have some affordable housing in their buildings that they build. There are several things that the city can do. And I know that there's very little space for new building. Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. PG.
Like Lisa said, one of the thing that we did earlier this year is assign an affordable housing task force. We created one. And we selected the developers, the realtors, the community members, because we want them to look at this problem and analyze with other cities and bring recommendation to city council. And next 30, 45 days, they will bring to us some recommendation. That could be, we do get grant from the federal government, TIF grant from federal government. Maybe we will be starting a nonprofit fund to do affordable housing. The other aspect of affordable housing is people has the perception affordable housing means all minorities. That's not true. The affordable housing for the seniors, the police, the teachers, our kids that went to school, coming back in our town and leave, they are the one needed the affordable housing. And that's the reason. I think we had to have little more communication with our residents so they truly understand how important is when your kid come back and they cannot live in our city without some affordable housing places to live.
Thank you, PG. And we'll start with you for this next question. This is on COVID. How many people and families are suffering financially? Excuse me, many people and families are suffering financially because of COVID. How will this affect Eden Prairie's city budget?
This is very good question. I had a discussion with our city manager. It's even city effect. And overall, we are good. We are okay. We are on 2%, 3% below the budget because of our city staff and our really qualified finance department. We able to maintain the revenue from many activities that we able to reduce. And we also, some CARE Act fund, we get it. Overall, we are okay. But more than city, how the whole city of the residents, 65,000 people, fearing. We do work very closely when a part of foundation, I work very closely with the prop and prop shop. And there is large increase of food shortage, large increase of people that cannot pay their rent, a large increase of people don't have a place to, a bed to sleep on. And so COVID-19 affecting a lot of people in Eden Prairie. Lot of people unemployed and low income people are unemployed. And I think we really need to step up and help everybody to bring everybody together.
Thank you, PG. Lisa.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Sure. Many people and families are suffering financially because of COVID. How will this affect Eden Prairie's city budget?
Okay, so as I understand it, revenues have dropped because of COVID in the city, and it's all related to the parks and recreation programs being canceled for the summer. But they also did not have the expense of those programs. So they're projected to have a loss of about $3 million from Parks and Rec with an offset of 1.8 less in expense. So there's a total projected loss of 1.2 million. This is less than 3% of the total general revenue fund. But the good news is the revenues have gone up from the liquor stores. So that's helping to offset some of that. And I also, I also spoke with Rick Gashow, the city manager. And I've been assured that this is something the city can manage without major cuts or reductions in service. They did receive a grant of approximately 4.7 million, a federal grant from the CARES Act. And that can cover, it can't cover lost revenues, but it can help with related expenses. So I think the budget's going to be fine. And we will, Eden Prairie is in a good position right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. This next question is on the infrastructure. Lisa, we'll start with you. How would you rate Eden Prairie's infrastructure? What are your priorities and plans to address infrastructure needs?
So Eden Prairie does a really good job taking care of their roads because they don't play catch up. They're exceptional at long-term planning. The Public Works Department does a really great job. It's constantly, the city's constantly working and improving our roads. This year, they did have some projects, some water projects. They took care of some recent water project. They rehabbed four wells. They're building a new ground storage reservoir, and they're maintaining the existing water towers. So they're, and they're also constantly upgrading the storm drains and pipes as needed. The reason for that is they just have a great long-term planning. Aside from those projects, they're still working on, there's a spring road project that they want to do in the future. And they've instituted a quiet zone for the railroad. So if you haven't heard the train lately, that's why. They just do a great job looking after infrastructure, and they have several projects planned for the future. And I look forward to, to watching them complete them. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. PG.
The infrastructure, the city spent lot of effort in the capital budget area to really maintain the road the way Lisa was saying. So we don't have the issues like some other cities that COVID-19, they have major shortfalls. We don't have, we planned that way ahead, and we change, we resurface our road continuously. We, our water system is up to par. We don't have to worry about for a long period of time. We have a very good snow removal systems. And overall, I think the city doing a great job. We don't have any major initiative planned for next two, three years. Pretty much caught up, I think.
Thank you. And PG, we'll start with you on this next question. It has to do with parks. Can you explain how you will maintain and improve our parks, lakes, and trails in Eden Prairie?
So parks, lakes, and trails are crown jewel. When I first came here 22 years ago, I was looking around. And then I drove around and parked in the park area, walk around. And then I said, I fall in love with Eden Prairie. The two aspect that people come to Eden Prairie is, one is the park, lakes, and what pathways, connecting pathways. Last 20 years, the council spend to make sure that happened. And the second one is school, this, school. We have a great school and we have park and rec department. We have an awesome guy running that. And I think we put lot of effort in terms of maintaining the parks and the lakes as well. It is the best part of Eden Prairie. And I think, I know, we, I will support 100% to maintain it and make it better every day.
Thank you, PG. Lisa.
One of the great things about Eden Prairie is the green One of the great things about Eden Prairie is the green space. There's no doubt about that. People have moved here because we have several parks and trails and lakes, and it's just a great place. Weren't we, we were voted the best beach community in Minnesota at one point, a few years ago? And that is from our, our Parks and Rec Department. They also offer several programs for kids. There's a safety camp that every kid's gone to in third grade, I know that. And they also, they do have a rather, not a large budget, but they, they take up a significant portion of the budget. I would, I would just like to ensure that they continue to get the funded, the, the funding that they need to continue to keep our parks up and our trails and, and keep this a great green space area to be in. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. PG?
Oh, here, here to answer it.
Just answer that.
It's my turn.
All right. The next question is on traffic. In the last survey, residents listed traffic and speed as major concerns. What would you do to address these issues?
Okay, so I think one of the reasons traffic is a concern is because of all the construction going on with the light rail around the city, and we just have to be patient. And when it comes to speed, maybe have more speed traps and have, I don't know about speed cameras, I don't know if I'm a big fan of those, but just, people just have to be patient and, until the, the construction is done on the light rail, which will be a year or two, and you know, it's not supposed to be here till 2023, so that's my thought on traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. PG?
I'm in the Southwest Transit Commission Board, and we spend a lot of time figuring out how the traffic pattern will change and the behavior in the future. And the key things we are started seeing that, you know, you, in, in Southwest, you are Southwest Prime, Southwest MD, you have a way to get from here to downtown taking the bus, and if you are taking that bus, it is really beautiful. You can do Wi-Fi now, light rail coming. So overall, I think the city traffic going to be reduced. We have to because to meet our sustainability plan in 2050, we had to reduce the carbon emission. So like Lisa said, yes, because of some of the construction that happening, it will, of course, summertime, there's some traffic issues, but I think that's temporarily, and I think we are in a good shape. All the roads are working really well, and some people just, just run fast. So we work with the city staff and the police, and we put some speed, just put the speed saying 30 miles per hour, not, not having anybody there, they just slow down. So we look at, monitor that to maintain that speed limit. And if any of you have a complaint, just send an email to us, and we will write on top of it anytime.
Thank you, PG. All right, this will be our last question before we go to our closing statements. And so PG, we'll start with you. It has to do with planning. City Council's chief responsibility is to set strategies for the city. What strategic initiatives would you push for?
So we already have quite few things in motion. I think it's affordable housing is, is a key, complex issue. We started a task force to analyze that, to get recommendation. We have multiple commissions that give us the different aspect of recommendation. The Human Rights and Diversity Commission gave, in terms of their aspect, the, the Park and Rec Commission gave us the recommendation. So we take all the different recommendations, and from there, we decide what to do. So one is affordable housing aspect of it. We already on the way, and we supposed to get a final report in 30, 45 days range, and I, I believe that it's going to be really helpful for the Eden Prairie in the future. And second one is the, the Human Rights and Diversity Commission. We ask them to check all the policies and procedures for the, our city to make sure that racial equity, all aspect of our procedures and training up to par for the city. So two of them are very important, and, and the last one is, of course, we have to bring businesses to Eden Prairie.
Thank you. Lisa?
So what strategic initiatives will I support? I would support, I would absolutely support safety, anything that has to do with keeping our citizens safe, funding of the police department and, and fire department for that matter, anything that has to do with affordable housing so that people can actually move to the city, because when we grow, we are going to, through growth, we're going to have more jobs, and so that would be great to have more people move into our city. And I would, sustainability, continue on their path. Eden Prairie's been a very progressive city when it comes to sustainability. I would also like to see, they're going to have, eventually, all the fleet be electric, all the city buildings have solar panels on them, but I would like to see them also recommend to developers, new developers, new developments going in, that they wire the homes and the apartment buildings for electric cars. So sustainability is a big thing that I would support. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, we will go now to our closing statement, and we'll, again, we'll go the opposite direction as we did our opening statement, so Lisa, we'll begin with you for one minute.
Okay. I would like to thank everyone that has taken the time to watch. I would also like to thank the League of Women Voters again for hosting this evening. Running for office in the current climate is extremely challenging. We cannot hold fundraisers or have any group meetings to speak of. This is why a forum like this is so important. We enjoy a great quality of life in Eden Prairie, and I think a lot of that has to do with the employees of the city and the city council. We also have a lot of services with one of the lowest tax rates in Hennepin County. If elected to the council, I promise to work to help guide the city to maintain our great quality of life. I stand for sensible budgets and taxes that support police and fire departments for a safe community, maintaining our infrastructure, and having a good mix of housing for all generations. We also need to encourage and support new and existing businesses. For the last eight months, I've been meeting or virtually meeting with the heads of each department in the city, the city manager, and each city council member. I am familiar with what's important in our city, and been well-prepared, and I am well-prepared to serve. I hope I can count on your support and vote honor before November 3rd. I have always enjoyed working together with people in our community. If I am fortunate enough to be elected, I will continue to work with everyone to keep Eden Prairie a great place to live, work, and raise a family. If you would like to discuss any issues that are important to you, please go to my website, lisatumi4ep.com, where you will find my contact information. And one more thing, tonight is my husband's birthday, or today is my husband's birthday. I would just like to say happy birthday. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa Toomey. PEGina Ryan?
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you and the residents of Eden Prairie. My name is PEGina Ryan. I'm currently, I'm a city council member. I am a community leader, an engineer, business executive. I'm passionate about EP and want EP to be the best place to live and raise a family. I will work with nonprofit organizations to understand, help many issues facing EP like COVID-19, racial equity, homelessness, sex trafficking, senior concern, transportation, LRT concerns, affordable housing concerns. I have been working with the police chief and other city staff about public safety. I work with them to be the best, best to protect us. I make sure we have fair taxes. I have managed a large budget. I know how to slice and dice the numbers. I will make sure our parks and lakes, roads taken care of, encourage the city to be more eco-friendly. I will work with all nationalities, all nationalities. EP make it as an inclusive city. Respect, honor our EP manifesto. I'm an engineer, business executive, a trained to analyze problem and solve. I will promise you that I will listen. I hope you vote for me on November 3rd, and I am looking forward to working with you, Lisa.
Thank you, PG. You too.
Thank you, PEGina Ryan. Again, thank you, Lisa Toomey.
Thank you.
Thank you to the candidates, the League of Women Voters, volunteers, and those viewing this event on cable and video for your participation in this candidate forum this evening. This forum is being broadcast live on EPTV, the city's cable government access channel, and streamed live at edenprairie.org, City TV, and facebook.com, City of Eden Prairie. The candidate forum will be rebroadcast several times each week and available on demand at edenprairie.org, City TV, leading up to Election Day on November 3rd. Please visit lvwmph.org for a link to the streaming video. This event was brought to you by the League of Women Voters of Minnetoka, Eden Prairie, and Hopkins. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night, stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You did a great job.